Hi, Claire.
Thank you, Mayor. Boarding the issues public meeting Tuesday, August 16, 2022. The time is now seven two. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Holy Land 1975, notice that this meeting was published in the Summer Bank 2021 issues of the Valley Sign, Herald News and Star Ledger. A copyless notice has been posted on the Valley Town Hall Bulletin Board and a copy is on file in the municipal office. Commissioner Kelly.
Right.
Commissioner Evans.
Here.
Commissioner Petronko is absent excuse this evening. Commissioner Tucci.
Here.
Mayor Scott Kelly.
Here.
President Mayor except for Commissioner Petronko is absent excuse.
Minutes, sir.
Thank you. We have minutes for July 19, 2021. Motion, please.
Motion, second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scott Kelly.
Aye.
And that's it for minutes, Mayor.
Communications.
Thank you, Mayor. We have several this evening. The Department of Public Affairs has submitted an event application for the 5K event in March. The location is being placed at Kings at Manor and back on Friday 11th from 11:32 PM. The Public Affairs has also submitted another event application for a pause in the park event. That event will be located in Kings at the Park on Saturday, October 15th from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And the rand date is Saturday, October 22nd at the same time. And Holy Family Church has requested permission to have the Our Lady of Sars religious procession on Saturday, September 24th from 8:00 to 8:30. I need a motion, please.
Motion, second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scott Kelly.
Aye.
And that's it for communications, Mayor.
Thank you, Claire. We have a proclamation that the Board of Commissioners will proudly present on Thursday to I-Side. We perform a simple company which is going to be 200 metric gold bars, which is a big tall building on the property campus. And I'm going to read that right now and we'll probably present that on Thursday. Whereas I-Side A is leader of the function leadership over three decades of advancing healthcare needs in Jersey. Focusing on research and development areas of neurology, oncology, as well as the storms and cancer related community. There were I-Side's corporate philosophy, who has you to help care, to give first thought to patients and people in the daily living domain to increase the benefits that health care provides. Whereas I-Side selected the on three campus as a prime location in New York or Jersey metropolitan area to continue the dedication to create the worst life science of the state. Whereas I-Side A is new headquarters in the US, the I-Side US HHC Echo Center. Whereas I-Side's US headquarters are second to common country, not the area. Whereas on Thursday, August 18th, 2022, I-Side US HHC Echo Center, and so on its grand opening of US headquarters in Nutley, New Jersey. Now therefore, we resolve an American Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County, Mississippi, New Jersey, that the Township is honored and excited to welcome I-Side family to Nutley, New Jersey. We have further resolve that the Township of Nutley extends its sincerest congratulations and appreciation to I-Side's overall contributions to the state. To make pride and proud of this proclamation commemorating the grand opening of US headquarters, I-Side US HHC Echo Center on August 18th, 2022. Good day, I-First. Let's move on to reports. So I see Bishop Petronko has a public stake report and I have some projects reports for the Department of Public Affairs. Bishop.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have a shape report.
Commissioner Evans.
Yes, I could possibly.
Thank you. Bill, about Claire.
Thank you, Mayor. Bill is for August 16, 2022. Public affairs, seventy-nine thousand three hundred twenty-six dollars and fifty-three cents. Revenue and finance, three million one hundred eighty thousand nine hundred thirty-three dollars and twenty-three cents. Public safety, one hundred six thousand three hundred fifty-five dollars and eighty-three cents. Public works, ninety-one thousand six hundred seventy-eight dollars and eighty-six cents. Parks and public property, two hundred forty-three thousand eight hundred eighty-two dollars and ninety-five cents. Water utility, seventy-eight thousand one hundred eighty-seven dollars and thirty cents. Payroll as of Friday, August 5th. Regular payroll total, eight hundred sixty-six thousand two hundred ten dollars and seventy-two cents. Overtime payroll total, forty-eight thousand three hundred nineteen dollars and ninety-six cents. Total payroll, nine hundred fourteen thousand five hundred thirty dollars and seventy-two cents. For grand total, four million six hundred ninety-four thousand eight hundred ninety-five dollars and forty-two cents.
What's Bill's? Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scott Kelly.
Aye.
And that's it for bills, Mayor.
Open comment on the agenda items of the Board.
Thank you. All persons addressing the Board's commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone, approach the microphone and provide their name and address with the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person should link their address to three minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may the first assess comments to appropriate member of the Board.
Boarding for, well, let me say that, can I have three questions about this? First page, section of the line, placing the names as worst solutions. I believe that's for the fourth. One is, I would like to hear. Mr. War, Mr. Bishop Petronko is not here tonight, so surely if we get back to you on that, I'll be down. Second, we page three, that was the first word, that language. Someone, they had a free little problem, twenty-five hours, of the public table. Yeah, Mr. War, the Board of Commissioners, Petronko, and that, and then Mr. Tucci. And there's one here, all pro tennis, staff and colleagues, that were. Yes, that was the thing, tennis professional. It's a, it's a bill that would pay, maybe was well set. Thank you, Mr. War. Anybody else wish to, uh, trust us tonight on agenda items of the Board? Seeing on, let's move on to the Board of Commissioners announcements.
Mayor, just kind of want to be here. Text bills related to the, yeah, should have been out. If they were, they were out, out on it. So we will extend the base period to accommodate the, it's not telling you what it is. You know, this is actually better and the services to be.
Bishop. Yes, thank you, my guest. This Friday, at six o'clock, will be open.
A property owner. First time or the second time I just requested to add density, it was another, another lawsuit that's filed on the front. Just have to put the other two on there. So in terms of the both standards, we have a minimum lot area of 2.25 acres. This is less than the actual size of the property. The reason why we put a minimum lot area is so that the property has to be developed in a single phase. And that way it minimizes the time of construction in proximity to, to the adjacent residential. There is no minimum lot area in either B3 or B3A zones. So we have a maximum of one phase and it's not applicable either to underlying zones where the location is, is currently being considered. The minimum unit sizes are studios of 600 square feet, one bedroom, seven hundred fifty square foot, two bedrooms, nine hundred fifty square foot. There are no applicable requirements in either the underlying zones, meaning that there are no minimum sizes for any units. A minimum front yard setback that's defined in the redevelopment plan is thirty-five feet, whereas in the underlying zones it's three feet. And again, I showed the differences here because I, I think it's important for everybody to understand that a redevelopment plan allows a township to provide and require greater setbacks, greater architectural design standards than underlying zone would allow in a dozen. The side yard setback, the rear setback five feet, this is only to move park from the plant. We'll show you that. Side yard setback is thirty-five feet. We think that's important to note because it's significantly greater than either the B3 or B3A zone. Where a project under those zones would be able to come in with setback, it would go up only ten feet from a rear property line and be adjacent to a single family residential home. The building height that's permitted in a redevelopment plan is three stories and forty-two feet, whereas the underlying zone permits three stories and forty feet. So there's a nominal difference between the height. These are really intended for architectural purposes to allow the building to be designed in such a way that it is similar to the architectural style of the adjacent residential. The maximum block coverage is sixty percent, whereas it's fifty in the B3 and seventy in the B3A. The previous coverage, surface coverage is eighty percent, whereas it's ninety percent in both of the other zones. I should say was, it still is until the redevelopment plan is done. The density that's being imposed here is thirty-three point three units per acre, whereas as I indicated prior to 2007, there was no density description. And in the post 2007 changes on the redevelopment plan. But the difference between the two densities is that in the redevelopment plan, we were, we were creating a density that is, that only allows for eighty-two restricted units and three market units, whereas the twenty-four units per acre would allow for all market. There are flood mitigation requirements as a part of the, part redevelopment plan that will both be included in the B3 and B3A zone. There are also infrastructure requirements that are identified in the document that the other two zones don't have it. And then there are other requirements in the document as well that come along through some of those, whereas none of those are required in the other zones. As I mentioned, the document includes a significant amount of both interior and exterior architectural design standards. My firm spent a great deal, a ton of history of nothing and trying to understand historically what the architecture was community in order to make requirements in the redevelopment plan to, to meet that kind of historic look. And so the, the developer, a developer would be required to build either a Dutch colonial or a British Dutch standstill. There are primary and secondary architectural standard features that are required as part of the redevelopment plan that are, that go through the pages. Having to meet some of those requirements in order to, to ensure that type of quality of design. There are also architectural design standards for windows, normers, porches, walls, columns, doors, roofing, articulation, balconies, as well as service and loading. They're identified in the redevelopment plan. The redevelopment plan does permit underground parking and underground parking would not count as a store. So, so that would be under the ground and not count as a store entry. So it's underground. Vehicles are not permitted to be used on the street. There are a couple of slides that might show some of the images that's a link to that is in the standards in the plan. There are other requirements that frankly are intended to ensure a high quality project. Some of those other requirements are that fitness center is a requirement of the redevelopment plan. And then two of the following are also required. Either a gaming room or entertainment reading room, actually a storage room, or a trial and fire pit on the courtyard. So three total would be required and a minimum of five percent of the total building structure, excluding apartment structure, would be required for amenity space. In addition to the exterior requirements that are in the architectural design standards, we have placed in a significant amount of requirements for the interior of the building. I would say that being all the numbers of sixty, seventy, and ninety-one plans in the west years, this is the most expensive set of requirements, interior finishes and improvements as a part of the redevelopment plan. I think the intent here is to try and ensure the high quality project that I think everybody wants to see. So the requirements for the interior are, yes, still to require individual washer and dryer, changers are required, tile bathrooms for floor and shower are required, landing or higher grade cabinets are required, solid surface, stone countertops are required, hardwood floors are required throughout. Essential HVAC system, seat systems are required per unit. Balconies that are provided are required at that railings. Solid wood panel with doors are required for the interior and for common areas, at least fifty percent of the common area hallings need to have carpet. Again, I'll write to some of the pages out of the redevelopment plan. In addition, we, we're requiring, and I call it a shadow study, I didn't realize that it might cause confusion. It's a sun shade study essentially. So as identified by the sun shade study would be looking at the building and, and understanding from a sun perspective where the shade would fall based on the design of the building, the height of the building throughout the entire neighborhood. So then you know on the page where it's the longest shade, where, how far that shade would to ensure that it does not impact the just certain things. There's also a traffic study that would be required as part of the site plan application. There's a requirement that talks about site lighting, having no sewage ducts adjacent residential. There is a requirement that says deliveries have to be on Paris Street and they can only be between 8:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. There's a requirement for loading refuse and recycling, all happen within the property. Again, the requirement allows for up to a maximum of three non-age restricted units and they all have to be studios. As I mentioned, the minimum amenity area within the development has to be five percent of the building, excluding the square footage apartment structure. The parking requirements for this type of development, in our opinion, are substantial. A lot of senior housing projects around northern Jersey for an age restricted would require up to point five spaces. But by requiring one point five spaces per unit, I think you're talking to the idea of a higher echelon, higher quality type project. So the minimum requirement is one point five spaces per unit. There are, and then the age restricted is, is, so those are for the, the one point five is for the non-age restricted units. Age restricted units require one point seven five spaces per unit. Whereas common market rate would require two to three point three. And your B3 and B2A zone, senior houses would only require one point five, whereas we're requiring one point seven five. So I know everybody wants to kind of see what the concept plan and what all that means in terms of on property. And so what we show here in the yellow, these areas, those are the thirty-five foot setbacks up against the property zone. Just pointing to, so we see that, so, so along the rear of the property, this is a thirty-five foot setback. As I indicated, previous story, the women's place now, this will be ten. So the setup will be, the idea would be below grade parking. So if there were any avenues, this actually would be below grade and it would daylight and it would be, you'd be able to access things to the garage. But this garage would be below grade so that if you were standing here on the grass, in theory, there was only going to be both stepping out to the top of the planning structure. So this is built into the ground. So there's no visiting parking from the same standard residential scenario. And this road will start to down, down so that you can access the apartment structure and then daylight at the top. And then on top of that would be a maximum of three residential units. So this particular area here shown would be four or five total apartment structure. So that these units would be facing, facing to the interior and these units would be at grade. And we've got three total stores and a total of forty-two feet. That's combined. What's the core of the parking? I didn't get daylight, I don't want to be part of project eight. This happens to show the first levels. It's the colors represent concept and the whole concept. The lightest floor represents common area. The lighter really represents one bedroom and the darker represents two bedrooms. Again, this concept plan application over time would determine caliber of project when you design. And this is the upper second and third floor. So the modest space would be entered into the ground floor for the residential units. That's my presentation. Thank you, Mr. Ryder. If there's any questions, please, Brian. So move on to the public here. This is in order to the board of commissioners, Natasha Nutley. Any of us about to report the back of space restoration? Move to the public here. Sorry, but I wish to address one of the commissioners on coordinates number three, four, nine. Or we won't let them say that in the third. Now, I think that the board of commissioners would be more accurate. Are you more of a question? When you look, it requires for a trial and stuff. It also requires for a shadow study. Like all the projects, they say, when is the developer available, available yet? I understand the plan without the traffic. This is not done for site plan approval. This is not, this is just a concept plan. Else studies will have to be done as part of the site plan process. I understand that. The, 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 say we're not at. Oh, okay. There are eighty-three apartments, one eighty-five, that are three, three studio apartments. The, the, the site plan is, it is listed right now, it's eighty-four. Where's the other five, you know? What's the concept? I don't understand where, who knows what's coming from, but. Right here, right, right. There's eighty-three, eighty-two units, right, that are dangerous. Then three, three that are studio or market. Units. That's six hundred square, six hundred. I mean, that, we're, we're on a, I don't see the mind of the layout of the wall.
Mr. Ryder? Yes, I have an answer. So again, this represents zoning. It's not a site plan application. The square footage you're indicating, which is a six hundred square foot, represents a minimum unit size. If and when a developer comes in with a site plan application, that developer would identify exactly where the market rate units are and would have to meet the minimum standard of six hundred square feet. That's not to say that they wouldn't come in with a studio unit that was seven hundred square feet or eight hundred square foot. But this is, represents zoning. Zoning represents, we like to look at it as minimum to maximum to, to ensure quality. So the minimum square foot is a six hundred square foot. But a, a developer would have to come in as part of the site plan application would identify exactly what units and square footage is on. Regarding the number of units on each floor in the building plan, it specifically states on the bottom that the capacity number is eighty-five. Direct member that, and it's the max number of non-age restricted units. So that would be eighty-two age restricted and three five.
Like I said, the numbers in question, where do you have those apartments? Just four, why, why the? Right now, there's not. Right? This is a concept plan. When the, when the developer, this is best, when the developer has an architectural plan, they come and put a plan for it. That will have the number of units, where they're located, how big they are.
I apologize. Are you, are you saying that you counted the number and they're only count, add up to eighty-three?
I had eighty-three.
Well, again, this is, and it's identified on the report. This is a concept plan. This is a concept plan. A concept plan O. And so when, if and when a developer were to come in, they would be able to do up to eighty-five. So this simply shows you the idea of how the building could be laid out. These, these one bedrooms are larger than the minimum sizes. These two bedrooms shown here are larger than the two bedroom minimum sizes. So a developer may come in and reduce some of the, the sizes on this plan to get an extra unit here there, which would get you to eighty-five. The zoning, which is a key part, not the concept plan, the zoning is for eighty-five.
It's a total of eighty-five, so that means it's part of the house. It's just, just trying to find out where.
The, the zoning allows for up to eighty-five. This is not a site plan application.
I understand.
Yeah. So it allows up to eighty-five.
Can you understand that this been, my, my concern? You have a concept, right? People have a focus that's actually, that's actually designed to. That's somewhat concerning.
The, the building footprint would be, was fairly fixed based on the setbacks that are required as part of the plan. The interior layout of the units and sizes and the number of ones versus two may change based on the market and what the developer might want to do. So, so eighty-three may be shown in there. I didn't, I didn't count them to look at it, but I understand. I appreciate that. But we could have very easily taken a portion of the lobby that's shown on the first one and added two units back in there and there you have your eighty-five. So.
When you look in the corner, eighty-five, the low points are five, three, like I said, eighty-three, three studios. That could shoot that one to forty-nine. We started to track down. And have charging stations, and have thirty spots for compact cars. And have six in the game, that the five cars will be there. Start to look at that. You don't have enough park for residents. So we, we want to start looking.
So again, again, I, I want to be clear. This is not a site plan. This is not, well, it's important to note that, that a developer will come in and will have to meet the minimum requirements in the plan, which is one point seven five spaces per unit. For example, you, you indicated that they have some electrical charging stations, right? So there are state regulations, you, you're pretty knowledgeable about it. There are state regulations that talk about if you put electrical charging stations, that there are, that there are give backs towards and the ability to reduce the, the required number of parking spaces. You, you're aware of that?
Yes.
Okay. So, so there's plenty of, there's, in the design, there's plenty of parking.
Parking on the initiative of the rest. You have a number of the shops that require us to.
The, the underlying zoning for a age restricted development by the township standards requires point five spaces per unit. We are requiring one point seven five spaces per unit. That is, is significant and substantially higher than what the underlying zoning permits and what the township's senior housing requirements permit.
That's why I didn't require a point, one point seven five unit. And I'm just going to, but you won't start on the basis. We're also adding here a center, a conference center. Or if you have a conference center, you find this, where do you people that attend the conference, who they are, that have the power.
If there is no outside use of any of those types of facilities, they're all called accessory uses. So a conference center or a meeting room is only permitted to be used by the residents. It cannot have outside visitors, it cannot, it cannot have. There is the, the, the amenities, the accessory uses, meeting rooms, conference rooms, all of those things are only to be used by residents. They cannot be used by outsiders. They're not commercial spaces.
And when you look at the plan, you have this forty-two feet plus twelve, plus five. I have this five. When, when you put all of this, it's.
The plan has a requirement for a maximum height of forty-two feet.
Yes, the building is forty-two feet, but then we add twelve, in, fourteen, the deck features and add five on the floor. I have this five.
The maximum building height is forty-two feet. Be clear about that. You're talking about, you're talking about, no, you're talking about whether or not there are like an elevator shaft, there is, there is stairwell that goes up. Those are, so, so let's be clear that it is not sixty-five feet. It is forty-two feet that is permitted. There are safety issues from a building construction code standpoint that require certain things like elevator shafts and stairwells that have to go up above that. And this plan acknowledges and accommodates for those.
We're interested as well. We're saying maximum forty-two. Roof top is four foot. And you're getting five, can I copy that? Sorry.
Is, and you're not listening to what I, how I'm saying. The roof line is forty-two feet.
Okay.
To say that it's sixty-two feet is just not, is not a correct or accurate statement.
Anybody else want to turn off coordinates number three, four, nine, sir?
Three, four, nine, about six, about six feet, about twenty, hold on for it. In one question. So number one, most likely. So the white one, I said twenty, which is almost a present. My back door is the one that applies something to the back. So, before we start, I just want to say I appreciate the officials' fun, trying to give us a little more amenity to those residents. I think he said, I think he was saying, maybe the, if you saw this over at the backyard, the whole of the, no. But it's happened. So this is, you know, a lot for us to take in. I think a lot of the fault of the physics, because you click there, that, um, this is a certain thing. What everyone can say, there are the waters, the petting, and this, that. It's clearly an expression, it's in the backyard, it's too much. Before we start with the white questions, that, that we, that we trust the officials for our presence. Because there's the townsman, very gracious, yelling that, about the question, at times. It's a job. It's completely unacceptable. The guy had pictures from three years ago. Right now, my backyard is hard to see, onto atrocious, there's moments. It enters five, it's one second by yesterday, so we've been in touch with this last year. We've been in touch with this issue, there's zero, any doubt. I, I've been in touch with people from, of saving, I've been in touch with people from powerful block. So whatever you want, we'll push all, so, so, something that's been done with this because it's good though for us residents around here. So before we finish with that, I just want to add. Second, firstly, I'm addressing my concerns as high. So I appreciate the fact that we have a shadow study, which really interests me. We spent a lot of money, a lot of time, we're going to solve that. So, very concerned enough, okay, that's, it's significant, you know, this is the cap. Just to clarify, I'm pretty sure it's precious. But forty-two feet is the roof, we understand it. Is there anything above that? So the other twelve feet, five, thirty, yes. I understand the roof, forty-two feet. But in the alley, there's stuff that goes on top of that. Does that affect shadow? Does that affect any of the, now? So moving out now from our, it's the western corridor, the downwind sunset. Now it's to a full car of buildings. And it's near stuff we're talking about. So that's the question.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate that. I, I, I don't mean to be, I, I want to be clear because I think it's important how we wrote the document to ensure that the maximum height of a proposed building would really match, in all intents and purposes, the underlying zoning that permitted forty feet. In our case, we've said forty-two feet. As a part of, of building code enforcement. So if you have an elevator or you have a stairwell, there are occasions, and I'm not saying that, that, again, a site plan application would show this. But on occasion, you have a, you have an elevator. And if the building is designed in a certain way where it doesn't have a pitched roof, it's flat, right? Then the elevator has to go above the roof line. And typically in most zoning ordinances, that is an additional twelve feet. That's not to say that this developer will, will have an elevator or will have a shaft for stairwell that goes up above. That's part of a site plan application. But they may, and, and we have to account for that from a building code standpoint. I, I get concerned when people say it's sixty-five feet because then everybody walks away thinking that the roof, that the building's going to be sixty-five feet high. It's going to be forty-two feet high. May there be some, some requirements from the building department to punch a few of the elevator shaft or stairwells up above that? There may be. So there, that's up to additional twelve feet. Or is there an option where the HVAC seat units may be up to five feet above the roof line? There are. So there are things that we typically allow for above the roof line, the ridge line. And in this case, they're really done from a constructability standpoint and from a building code standpoint.
So, we understand. But I'm just trying to get from the alley, still, yeah, four, two.
Sure.
Yeah, when I'm on my back door, I'm going to see someone like the, at the top. And then that's, that's, again, it's, it's the back door, that's completely different. You know, so, so.
Understood. And so, so what I would say is, is that we've required a pitched roof as part of this project. So I don't know for sure that any of those things will actually be, will be designed in that way as part of the site plan application. We're, we're really allowing it. And, and again, there may be, in, in the instance of the plan, there may be one or two of those types of elements that come up. But that's, but that's really more from a, a building construction requirement. It won't be that you're having them all over the place and therefore the building is, you know, the ridge line is, it's at forty-two feet, but now you have these, you know, twelve foot all around. What I would say is, is that as a part of the, I call it a shadow study. I know some people call it a sun shade study. As part of the site plan application, a sun shade study would be required. And they would have to show those elements to make sure that if they were proposing, to make sure that they did not impact any of the adjacent residents.
Obviously, yeah, we, so that, the local case, the, the, it would determine that, that, that type would affect, say, our yards.
So the planning board has the ability to require them to, to alter the, the design if it impacts the, the single family neighborhood.
Now, my second question, my second, again, considering just moving in the back door. Are there balconies that kind of, the balcony is kind of back, so again, on that side. Somebody's going to have a balcony on the third floor. I mean, to my.
Your reserves?
Yeah, right, exactly. The whole pool, like, I'm perfect. So somebody on the third floor has a balcony. They can be right with, with the floor.
So, so if, if a site plan application comes in that, that a balcony is on the third floor and obviously they'd be at a height of somewhere between twenty-four and twenty-five feet high. And at that point, now we have required buffering with landscape and all the sets, but, but yes, theoretically, you would be high enough to see. Now, now what I want to, I want to be clear is that we have required a setback of thirty-five feet from the property. The underlying zone only allows ten feet and a forty-foot building. So we've placed a building thirty-five feet from. The underlying zoning allows ten feet, and forty-foot building, so, we replaced a building thirty-five feet from proper line at forty-two feet, and the underlying zoning allows ten feet and forty feet. So, what we're trying to do, first and foremost, is put together a plan that better protects residents' behavior. And that, and that's part of why we require ours.
I understand, that's why I announced, I announced, we tried, we put today, that's your door, I don't want somebody looking up, I can raise five, one, see all the people, my wife, break this, she doesn't see the key. If somebody sees me, one, two, one, it's just, that's, that's. Um, the next thing we address, um, it's, it's, and what I understand, when the residents are having, is to have the new future, going to rats, in your house, adding a grace to our, of, of, of chest, uh, of these explanations, so, if you're, if you're back, or, you know, you may never, never, but, we're just on that way, and as I said, I have built into my yard, just for now, so, what kind of, um, prevention is going to be done, and, A, B, what kind of records, safety records, uh, records can we expect as residents, to supposedly get before, you know, exterminator, again, you're going to be, for that, we're going to disturb, because they haven't disturbed, we're going to, there's got to be a ton of, to be. And, you know, I mean, it's, it's significantly concerning ours, that we're very afraid of, what, what sort of, some rats are making. So, that's, and that, and what, and those are pretty concerning.
So, if I want to answer the first part of the question, I, I don't know that I can answer the second part of the rules. One of the things that we tried to work at was to use the existing rates in order to best fit the project in, and make it as scalable as possible in terms of, to approximately the same, so, everybody's aware that the pool is, pool deck is around here. So, the intention of this design is to have parking structure at a park level, we drive in, at, at around, maybe a little bit lower than that existing pool deck, right? So, that pool deck probably only goes to about here, so there wouldn't be excavation, that would be, uh, currently where the lockers are, and that where some of the, the, uh, upper level apartments. So, we did try to look at it in terms of breaks, to minimize the impact profile of the building adjacent to the single-family houses. Uh, I can't necessarily answer the question with a son perspective about, about the roads and the rats, and what of the peremptive instructions, so I'll. Do that to.
Yeah, I, I think it's a requirement, I'm very told, on, you know, doing some baking and stuff before construction. So, we can make that part of the site.
Mayor, if, if, if the planning board level, if that could be included, as part of this, okay. Sorry. I'm, I'm sorry, I apologize. Uh, so what I was suggesting to the mayor is that, when this proposal, to just be clear, this is just a plan. We don't have a redevelopment, who's actually put a plan together, that's prepared to go forward with the planning. We have not designated a redeveloped for this area, so this is only a concept. When it does go before the planning board, I was suggesting to the mayor, both the mayor and Mr. Tucci, both sit on the planning board, that has an armed, big resolution of the planning board, and this is finally heard, it was actually specifically language that addresses, uh, things that address locals and other things, which would then enable the health department and the construction office to enforce that. That's me.
Mr. Tucci.
Mayor, I apologize. I, I believe the mayor is correct, if we, whatever you have, just. It's a requirement, so that, ultimately, we see now, on certain, thinking of the road, or experiencing something like that, all of a sudden. All right, Mr. Regal is actually correct, mayor, I appreciate that, to take that situation, to, so, yeah. That is always concerning.
And, that, that's my understanding as well, is that you have to, the, the, I think, this time, to your end, that fade at least two weeks in advance of, of, any planned excavation. I also just want to touch on the TRAC voting problem. Uh, this is an unprecedented problem, uh, my office has spoken to, uh, exterminators, that's, uh, looking at ways to address it, we've been vague throughout the town, uh, it just seems to keep on coming, to give a good idea of the perspective, that this is not a unique situation, it's nothing. Uh, New York City, the year, this year, twenty-twenty-two, had one thousand more complaints about rats at the end of May than it had in all twenty-twenty-one. Uh, from what I've thought from the S R status, is basically, they're extorming in combination with I A, combination with COVID, especially with, with COVID, people are less likely to call an exterminator, have them come in and deal with the rat issue, so they're going to fester longer, so you're going to see a lot more of them. Uh, but hopefully, our efforts will, will get this under control, and, and if not, I think, just hold it in the next year.
Um, it's like, this is, so, so, well, remember, water issues, you know, you, I suppose, that's, in the, in the, down, for, but not back for the time. This is, this is. Exactly, you know, it's, it's, it's.
Just say, so, yeah, if, if you do explain a little more, is that?
No, sure, okay, I think we should go right by the front, it's not a, train, train, you should be trained for this, you know. If something will change, that way this town, go, it's, matter of some, matter of change, structure, train, change, it goes with the way.
Then it's not a major, uh, major construction, like, there are still, well, regulations, that could be followed, so that they don't produce more of a, of a, it's, right?
That's my, so that's, that's going to be addressed, as well. So, it's, and then, one of my final issues, I'm very, can you, um, this is. Yeah, eventually, unless we need to put up a public, so, that was mentioned, that was part of the, of, 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 of. That being said, I'm finding it's, it's, that, someone's going to pay. Someone wants to go to my yard, it's up to that bill, I try to, yes, so, is that, I trust the way, that's just, I'm sorry.
Say, for y'all, and I understand in perspective that you know, my hope is that, when this is, um, offered, that we put it, the shadow study, which will create, so, you know, and the, thirty-five volt setback, the property values, this is the problem, rather than, that present.
Every day.
I can tell, but I know.
I, 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 I'm. It's certainly been, it's been, yeah, five minutes. Don't remember this, I was, I was.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Too much of God was in, certainly, expressed.
Hi, good evening, uh, Grant, you should, three, seven, eight, nine, eleven, uh, we're shared driveway. Probably, uh, when my wife and I looked at the house, uh, from that, we had May twenty-sixteen, and it just felt like home, like, right away. It meant that, like, the roads would make cookies, so it's just a bad trip, so it's, good, but the other thing was, we were out in the backyard, and, uh, we heard it, we had an old house, we heard, like, kids, like, laughing, and we're using, and it just was, like, we were really excited. Uh, it came to this, like, awesome possibility, we were, we got a house, I was a little blinded by that, it's definitely a shared driveway. I wasn't thinking, like, well, what's going to happen if that, if that, if that business, we're, we're around, and here we are, so, we have a lot of concerns. Um, first of all, I feel like, first of, actually, I have some big reputation, there's a petition I want to thank you, I asked you about plans, about, what? Melon, just put in email, Melon's, my house, we appreciate it. But, there's been other things, like, communication issues at the meetings, there's been, um, oh, there's a skunk, dead, right on the driveway, who do I call? And I call, let's have the, we can do that, and it's just like, it looks like I'm a legend back there. It looks, it's just like, it's like, gone to the dead stuff, and it's really unsettling. There's been drug use, uh, it's got, it did get a little better, uh, maybe like a year ago, because it was really bad, I think, I'm better, and I feel like it's right, right? Trust us, and it can be concerning, definitely, in terms of a problem. Um, also, I, I'm hybrid, going back to work, so, so, back, like, my wife and I works, uh, from home, five days a week, so, whatever happens to that, when you do it all, there is just top-level communication and transparency with neighbors, but, when, and construction starts, I'm concerned about it. And if there's anything inside, I say, well, to hear it, how long will that take, what house slots will it be, you know, things like power, things like, when all those things are concerned now, someone goes somewhere with the pole, uh, the other issue is, I really want to know about the driveway, I want to know, it's like, you see, I think it's up there, but, what the grid requirement is, and being that we share the driveway, uh, you know, what's that going to be, and what, and what protection can be put in place, uh, to protect us, you know, as far as kids, or that's, um, that's, well, that's.
Mr. Ryan, it's, it's, I was thinking, my, 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 uh, I'm asking a question. Wait for his answer. Uh, uh, he's, he's, he's just, he's, he said, wait, yeah, he's looking to see how wide the driveway is, which restroom, which.
Absolutely, now, I, I, but, but, there's, I am still concerned in the meantime, um, for example, you've got trees that are, like, really bad shape, that are on that property, every summer. Uh, I really, very concerned, um, what's going to happen, those, do fault, when's fault that, uh, what stuff will be, put in place, who do we call, when we still call the town? Is there another, is there another owner call, and any, it's like.
Call the town, we will, uh, you can take care of, we'll, we're, uh, we, 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 we.
All right, just the thing is, I'm here, the thing is, like, there are a lot of, things don't really get answered itself, and, and appropriate at the time, so. It's, I'm saying, just, I urge you to contact us, correct?
Still have the construction. I don't have the construction. They'll lose the whole property, uh, John, who's, who's, health inspector, can join him, we'll do together, just go through the special department, see what the condition is, and, 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 the extent that there are violations that need to be addressed, they will pitch.
Well, if still, you're being serious, same.
Yeah, I understand, but, yes, I know that they have, that they're talking, they've gone to owner and had it addressed. If they are not completely addressed, we, the town, will address that, at the end of the, the, the.
I was struggling to say, I really, that, that, that's.
I'm giving you my word, and either tomorrow, and I assure you, you will hear from me, or with that accent, to do my, 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 my. I didn't say that, it's, it's, I'm not contacting the residents, here you can be tonight, you have my word, construction official will be here tomorrow, and I will be here to, I will do that, in containers.
I, I just heard that, I, I will, to, to.
So, to address the question, so, the redevelopment plan, uh, does not address the dimensional width of the parking, of the driveways, but it, but it states in the plan, and if it's not specifically addressed in the plan, it differs back to the zoning ordinance requirements of, 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 attention. So, whatever the, the attachments departments are, the road width, we have to maintain, that's part of the site plan.
Yes, your name and address?
My name is Mary, I'm, 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 I was sitting in the back there, this hard, for, for people, I just want to make sure. Uh, my name is Stephanie Quintana, I'm at Community One, the same avenue, uh, so, you guys will know that's the first library in town. Uh, my issue is concerning the spot of land in France, in the last five days, I've got, I think, eight hundred and fifty, a spot of land in France, in the parks and around the town. Um, I'm, my question is concerning, what is the town doing to condemn its parks, because maple, or, and ash trees, are very susceptible, and a lot of those trees are in the parks, um, not in those trees, but surrounded by, are lichen, palm, power lines, eels, or, one of our trees are, which are very old, they're susceptible to, to damage. Um, and I'm talking about, the town's also doing, educating, because this is far beyond, I'm, yeah, especially since, look, and we're on treeing out of the rat.
The, the orig- the original, uh, guidance that we received, was just, it said, we see one step, but we try to step on it, we know that they move pretty quickly. All right, it's not, it's not that easy.
But, you didn't see, you didn't know that?
Yes, and now that they are pretty much wrapped, stable, jerk, all right, there's additional guidance, that's coming out, our, our words, our town orders, is on top of it, and if there's something that we can do, whether it's, whether it's spreading, or baiting, we're into every proportion, we do that, we do know, and they, they are very dangerous, and they're very hazardous,
And that's a creature, sorry, that now, that's the substance, all right? It's, it's dangerous for many of our trees. So as soon as we get additional guidance, we will be putting that out or putting it out on the town website. Put it out on Facebook and do whatever we can to pay it as best as possible.
Do you have a timeline on when this, the next cycle of projects start? I mean, again, it's the fall, so there's some time to issue.
There is a time issue here. And like I said, our worst is on top of it. All right, John looks, he's here every day and taking, taking all those people, spraying them, insulting them. Some of them, uh, some success. But if there's a pesticide, again, we wait for that guidance, there's a pesticide that's out here. That's safe for both people and pets, all right?
What would the city is only using, banning, uh, the safe for, there's that are safe for birds and wild ones. It's a lot of secret drugs, horrible type of birds, and people do that stuff. But there are safe options out there that other towns and cities are implementing.
Right, and that's exactly where our, he's researching what those safe options are. And once we get to the, the end of it, we'll optimize.
It's important for the record that we understand that this mayor and commissioners attempted on multiple occasions to first eliminate residential access committees. And second, once it was possible that that was still limited, that couldn't be built on.
Again, maybe less effective than you would have thought. Um, before I can say, I've got this very simple question. Eighty-four, five minutes there, he was saying, you know, the delivers will be coming in through Harrison Street. Now, we're talking DPS, trucks constantly coming down, we're talking better with structure, talking garbage, we're talking furniture, we're talking homes, trucks coming over the red thing once, and then they want to focus that really might focus that, and then that may end up as a two weeks. What might have been a buffer somewhere in the planning, proposing a fire, that this house is a war?
So Mr. Ryder, she's talking about the dry road recovery at all of Paris, right? The houses, the back.
Yeah, so the limit, what we try to limit is this, is to know that it's virtually not through politicians, number one, if we give your line up on our practice, it's most likely to be a dry road for all of the most of that dimension. So what we have required is part of the development plan is that, is that all delivery systems come to A and S, you know, so the idea was to require those types of people to move this during the time period where most people were moving at work, and therefore they're not limited at, uh, before school and after.
It's kind of a school, that people are walking out of the door into the back door, or we have people who are in the front seat of the van, again, we have people who sort of sit in the back door and not have this back porch, it should be some kind of requirement, like some type of, if they're people with... My second question is, you're talking about eighty, again, eighty-five minutes, need that system, where are these systems from, what is going to be their noise out when it's like a hundred, a lot of time?
Yeah, so what I would say is those would be the right and appropriate questions to ask inside the application about developer, what the system is, of course, we don't know what kind of H B A C system or E B system somebody might propose, and these are our proper questions that planning board should be concerned with in terms of noise and what we've done. Uh, we haven't done anything in terms of noise, we've got a great plan for application review, we have created a site line to add zero, uh, landing, a storage office.
I would really appreciate any consideration that people are, ah, serious, what houses, and of course they were in the bar, it was, it was a combat, and now this is like, traffic disorder, it's gotta go some way, something about, uh, taxes.
Good evening, I'm John Rose, my word, succeed, whatever. Uh, questions for the board, I'm a question, that's just from, yes, statement, yeah, before, understand when it's a development, that you've got a lot of things to back, a lot of back to, finances, uh, insurance to, to match that, I hope it's able to account. Schools, by release, if, if we continue to get parts in the role of this town, how are those fired, how do they ever, how do they ever think of, I mean, when we're hiring, you know, mass hiring, it eventually all goes on the tax bill, which is all over, all my neighbors. You know, and, and when all those factors are taken in, is there even just a little bit of consideration that we need to make, need to make? Understood, so you tell it, it's an area of concept, this whole thing, but again, the lines that are impacting most, uh, are these folks here, I trust that though their consideration is, is to what they're having to live with, you know, all of a sudden, just, you know, because there is an immense difference, difference from a seasonal pool to a eighty-some unit, me, you just see, the purpose that's growing up in this town, where, where do we stop? Where does this stop, animated, where's it stop? That's, you know, I don't know, I don't, I don't get it, I mean, if there's a master plan in place, we're gonna look up and see what it is for us, you know, somebody with master plan can trick work, it's, it's, you know, take another look at it and try to, you know, like taking into consideration, because this town has always, always been practiced to tell people, I don't do nothing, that's just start leaning, and it's really sad, true sadness, I, you know, hope much speak for the rest of this town, um, it's a great neighborhood, it's a great neighborhood, now, it's a great neighborhood. Uh, questions for this, uh, firstly, ingress and degress, I mean, those two, is there going to be ingress and degress in both of those, coming out both streets, are they, I mean, the one coming off of Harrison Street is generally, it's not even a street, and the other one's, you don't drive, it's not the, it's just coming to the wreck next to this, to break this house, I mean, how is, how is ingress and degress, where are these cars gonna, you know, drop onto these roads? Eighty-five minutes, that, that, one point seventy-five, that's a lot of cars, that's a lot of cars, and again, this is residential neighborhood, this is not frat land, this is not seven street, this is, if you're gonna do an error, a lot of name, you told someone that area, it could really drop, a few months drop in there, it's, it's, it's unbalanced, it really is, there's a lot of other things, you know, and I want to look, you know, pretty up here, tax base, and all that sort of stuff, but that's, that's what we're striving to hear, then, then we have a problem, we have a problem, a, a, a bigger, you know, global problem. Uh, another question, and again, ingress and degress, has anyone here got a problem running from man out of this place, is we one way in, one way out of our world?
So the, the plan allows you to go through access points, driveway, it's a two-way, uh, they, the locations were chosen because they're the previous location when, when storms was act, active, those, those driveways would be access points, and out of there is the, the cap.
I'd like to see how, I'd like to know, both of those areas are regulated, whatever it is, B O T, whatever, for everyone, regulate that, I want to see the window that, safe, especially in the, they look like cars, I want to do that, say, I'd like to see them. And speaking of which, you know, when, when we, I understand for this, you know, there's not a site line out there, and if I'm not mistaken, site line is not a bunch of, that's a, it's, you know, I just trust, I hope, that site, site plan review board will take us into consideration, okay, that, that, you know, the tax pay, voting citizens of the public are taken into consideration, when they start, and all this starts, yeah, I'm a problem, no way, you know, to us, when we get to the point where existing zoning has just put into a reason, it's been there for a reason, when all you have to do is throw enough time, and money, and words, and litigation, something, and change place, there's more to this, again, we're going in a bad place, we're going in a bad place, and, uh, so ingress and degress, let's, let's see, let's see. Secondly, you know, especially more so nowadays, flooding is a problem, we have storms that are more prevalent, are fast and hard, and now the system is nothing, cannot take, it cannot take, that's why we have backups everywhere, you know, they're all going to prefer, wherever the system gets full, nothing goes down, and again, it's a site board, is this, is the question for you also, the impervious, the impervious ground, what's the increase going to be to impervious compared to what it is now?
I don't have the answer to what it is now, I can tell you what the, like, zoning permits, that's what we showed with track. What I would say about stormwater management is that, is that, as the man who gave previously New Jersey D E P requires of any, any stormwater management, coastal destruction is equal or better to pre-construction, so, the typically what would happen is a part of the application, developer would show where a town of waters being collected on site for a storm event, being held on site for a storm event, and then being dissipated into the system after the storm, that would all be determined in the, in the, again, I, I, the board knows that, you know, and I know they're expensive, and what we have to look for, they're not big retention chambers on there, is there, if there's nothing to slow that water down, to hold until the system can take it, we're gonna flood, worse than we do not, which, you know, I have named a few two cars, because the system can't take, understood, it's whole system, the system can't take it, and as the building crews are heard, you know, there's a fart down, you know, this is gonna make worse, it's absolutely, it's tired, it's gonna come down, actually does not, it comes down that dry road, it's not here, but, you know, it's, it's just, you know, and when they get worse storms, more frequent, everyone else, and again, I don't, somebody's making notes up there, but we better have a retention system underneath, they're expensive, I mean, the real problem, on some, only, you know, flexway, I mean, ten years in the whole nine yards, because everything it can't handle is staying there, you know, and it's coming up, it relaxes in the street, and it's, it's not fair, it's not fair, we don't really want to have a manor, we don't want to worry with, this city's not, you know, again, I trust that everyone here, and moving forward, every other board, this boat's slow, taking into consideration, these folks here who vote, pay taxes, have kids in it, you know, and make this town what it is, that's what makes this town what it is, good people. Um, and the last thing, who's the owner of the record of this thing, right now, as we speak that, probably, that's public knowledge, there, there's a tax there, it has its public knowledge, who owns this piece of property, is it the Zonal?
It's, it's property. I don't really, I don't have a lot of time on my hands, it's an LLC, sorry.
Sometimes I come in here, this is gonna, this, like, it's just like the guy who builds fifty, fifty buildings on the crack of a hat, yes, yes.
So family, LLC, they've established, what is this, is only a man, who are the owners, you have to give your own, there is an investor, another investor that's associated with this, uh, who's, let's say, this program, is going into the, you know, I don't know, they have what the ownership split is off the top of their head, and it was okay.
So basically, you have to take money and get out of the lawyers, and fight to get this nonsense through, that's basically what it is, he, 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 the wearer of all, boost this through, and it looks like it's happened, you know, so, a-again, I, I just would like to, for, you know, and everybody, we, in the consideration, that neighborhood, it's a good neighborhood, or yours, thank you.
I know you all, thank you. I appreciate you, one more question, I have a question for you, just in terms of everyone's concerns, me as president, if there were the opposite, Alex, the way we lost the tax, we have an important to come back to, shooting at which issues, is there anything we have to go, as the, as well as, I don't know what I have to want?
In which ways?
So supposedly, like you said, the, what would you want from, uh, what if, better than, or, traps, so that there's no, or something, I'm gonna rat my base with others, not before, yeah, then everyone come back to.
So you're saying, to, to, yeah, this, yeah. In terms of the stormwater management, Mr. Ryder's made this point, while on the story, the Jersey State Department of Fire Protection strictly regulates stormwater management, any developer, also for the planning board, require to show stormwater management calculations, based upon certain flood events that will be there in the D E P regulations, they will have to show and demonstrate the satisfaction of civil engineers who represent for that those D E P regulations aren't compliant, town with that discretion, you know, town board would like limited discretion to turn to what it had to require, state mandates for us to develop, and wars all, brings to ensure that the state regulations are required, the New Jersey stormwater management regulations are above restrictions, if God restricts this, so why don't we make sure everybody understands that, that storm, this town is a role, development process, it relates to development itself, is to zone, plan, approve project, if there are coastal construction, uh, construction defects, or issues with things like that, uh, this town is a role, depends upon the circumstances, uh, if there are improvements that are required to, to which is bonding, which is how it shores coastal, those improvements are there, or are public improvements of some sort, that accompany these types of projects, uh, if there are construction defects of that nature, then that's really residents and development, if there are public health issues that arise, whatever they arise, no we score on this, this town will address public health concerns, and if there is reason or ability for this town to seek recourse against the developer within certain, but, you know, that's, that's an intention, how it's a role, sort of a coastal development, stage of, of this project, or whatever, just, just, best way to find us, you know, I encourage my, 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 so after this is done, simply, it's that act, what we're, where are you at? Well, I don't know your particular circumstance, again, public health concern, obviously we're all for, to this development perspective, again, the, the planning board's role is all to ensure that the stormwater management regulations are strict enough, I'm not a civil engineer, that's enough planning board, and I understand our words, um, there cannot be any second, this is well, in fact, every planning board application that I've been involved with, representing boards around the other side of the table, the coastal construction issues, because there's used things, there's douche stall, or there's retention cases that is the team, or, uh, and either infiltrated, or connected to existing water system, that will take it off-site, straight to the, I would be willing that, uh, that whatever the stormwater situation is now, the, the development, property, uh, given the regulations, oh, in the future, will have to comply with, that would be a subject of the planning board application, and you will receive notice, however, whether you know that, when the developer does come before the planning board, or site planning review, there will be notice, that that developer, developer obligates mail to all residents at two hundred feet of the property, there'll be saved certified letter, there will also be public notice, written in this paper, or in this paper, so you will be notified when there's a site plan approval, you'll be able to attend, and you'll, plans will be on file, uh, the planning board will be able to do the plan, to pass the theory, so you'll have every opportunity to ensure that the questions that the essence, that made the site plan are addressed by the planning, obviously not questions for the emissions, they are questions, good questions, that the planning board will absolutely.
One more question, thank you, I need to quit, now it's, all of a sudden, have four minutes, it could say, whatever we want about the plan, it could happen once it's, it's pretty dramatic, where do I go with that?
Typically, typically, there is bonding that, that this place, stormwater has a system, and, and again, that's all, uh, is approved by the board, there's oversight, and everything, construction, uh, I think, well, I think there's a very, very, as I say, it's possible, I think going well, the odds are, whatever your work, whoever cites this, have it be approved, once it gives a development condition, but the evidence, your order of revision, after the project, so, uh, the first word that it shows, there's, there's, how to form, no, it's, it's never had it before, it's not happened, you know, it's like, all of a sudden,
where do I go, where, I have to, like, right now, just this point, I have fifty, I have I have huge bits, I'm on my side, and trees that are, are this problem, but they're on my side of things, everything, I've almost completely, I'm, I'm, there's, there's a huge wrench that fell, I know we have, I have to move, I don't know, so, my point is, like, things are happening like that, clearly, that all these things happen, so, so, we have nothing to do with, that's, so, 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 that's what I'm saying, yeah, you say, what you're saying, that this would be planned, as possible, however, should it not happen, look, I do not have order of investment, what do I do with the, what's it, you're saying, so, so, how does a lot of power, to feel like, we could go with the town, or she bring, or, or, for certain, or, 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 developer requires post-bonds to ensure that the work is done, uh, the way it's supposed to be done, um, and if not, then this town, it will step into the work, and, uh, revise the funds, ensure that the work was done correctly, so, you know, there's a lot of protection, development system, those requirements, by the way, spell out, protection, protection for the public, uh, what we spell out, we have a development creator, and also, in the development, which will allow that to be, to say, approved, so there are various levels of protection, to ensure that the work was being done, so, once again, do I have an issue, what, am I doing the most well?
I mean, I do, you know, the issue of order of investment, or rather, can rise under so many different circumstances, those are possible, it's, 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 it's possible for somebody to say, well, well, it's worth it, I think, well, well.
In their forty years, I have, I almost have, I don't know, it's like, because I have expenses.
Well, yeah, again, I think, I can only tell you, for, for, for this, and, you know, things about, some, some issues, and, and it involves property owners, so, 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 so much trespassing about the property, that's, that should be not prepared, with, you know, I'd say, go, go, I'm saying, it's not more issues than private property owners, that, or the responsibility of this town, it really depends on, based on, you know, what the causes, what the issues, I don't know, whatever issues, but, if you don't solve this matter, and then the decision, if made, it's on circumstances, has to, you know, be very responsible, I bet, the, the specialists.
Just, just one more question, I don't know, I'll, I'll just to notice, others in this, 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 like, said, as it was before, down the road, sixty, I, I, I know that you just told that, that the public is invited to attend the, the site plan review, that the plans actually get posted somewhere online, so that they can be, you know, scrutinized, plans will be on file, this will, notice that you can see, that the, the, notice of the public hearing, of the site plan, there will be a paragraph in the notice that says that plans can be on file, this is a planning office, they're going to bid, and it will provide hours of the day in which you, or any member of the public, will have the opportunities to walk into town hall, see the custodian of the flags, and private, the, the plans, of such, such a project, that the, the custodian will provide you with the plans, and then they place a sample.
Set a place to take off.
No, they provide you with those set of plans, and, and space, and the, the, the school building, for you to.
We thought that the technique had to be by somebody who knows more than if you signed up, you would like, you would like.
That, you should contact the custodian, arrange for comments to be made, and many times, there's a town, or a range, for, for, for comments to be made, at work sites, and then you can take those plans home, send it to an engineer, whatever you want, the whole idea is to provide transparency, to provide public access, well, complete transparency for our computers, there's complete access for you, you, all of the plans, all of the public, all of the reports that are issued by the board professionals, or available to the public, they'll themselves, or the information, that the board will, if I have comments, questions, concerns, after we connect, we're going to, so, you, you tend to help the hearing, in the way it works, the applicant will have witnesses, or, yeah, when you storm waters, and, um, the applicant will have a civil engineer testify, with regard to stormwater management issues, what the D E P regulations are, what the system is to propose, how that system will apply with the D E P regulations, once that expert has provided that, or affirmative testimony, then you, or the representative, will have the opportunity to cross the sample and witness, will have the opportunity to ask questions of that engineer, certainly, develop, uh, to either confirm, ask questions, or to challenge testimony that may, in addition to that, the board professional, so, issue a report that critiques the submissions made by the applicant, uh, and, and they adhere, that the applicant will have to repress, uh, the issues that are raised by the board's engineers, so you know the benefit of a board engineer, his job is, is to critique and challenge the, uh, every aspect of the application, storm management, or your architecture, planning, whatever it is, the professional on board side, that will critique those, uh, submissions and issue reports, in addition, everything will be relevant to the public, and you will be able to ask questions, challenge, uh, those witnesses, at the end of the proceeding, you will then have the opportunity to speak, and, and voice a pitch, for, to, to, to hear the team, consideration, and it's a, before they vote, at the end of the proceeding, write their pitches, to, to, to ask questions.
And who takes, who takes those opinions into account then, if I am more, if I am more, they say, like, seriously, or is it just, you know?
I would imagine so, I can tell you that.
Lip service, you know, it's lip service, you can bring from.
In the thirty-five year, did I, this, I think, more than I can say, speaking, I actually, the, the, the question, very, very serious.
I, I hope so, I trust.
I, 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 I trust, they, they, they will, they will back, there's witness on this whole, as to what they do, or comment.
I'm, 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 yeah, yeah, that's awesome, that's, that's cool, uh, the other question is, fifty, I don't know if it's down, fifty-five and over, but fifty-five is old, and more, okay, I believe people were in, you know, and people still were, they weren't until seven, so there's still gonna be people coming over to work, and, and, you know, it's not gonna be like it's a visiting place or something, this is gonna be, you know, again, ingress, degress, is gonna be important, after, you know, safety wise, you know, next to a park, next to a golf field, um, but fifty-five over, does everyone get that, unit, have you fifty-five now, exactly, is it the least? You know, those, let's say, you know, somebody had their, some compliment, because, you know, there'd be a lot of simple accounts, I mean, that, or, there are specific, specific requirements that will be restricted, uh, means, and those requirements have certain provisions, uh, and I don't know all the details, every one of those provisions, I would say that, it's my understanding that, uh, at least one spouse has to be over the age of fifty-five, and they can have, you can have spouses under the age of fifty-five, the event that the spouse over the age of fifty- The event that the spouse over the age of fifty five passes away, spouses under fifty five is allowed to stay there and live there. But, but so the regulations are clear within the state document. I don't have those specifically, but the intention is that it's over fifty five is, is the, is the answer. And who believes that the, the manager of the, is there going to be outside manager? There's the, you know.
Well, it's, 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 one unit should be destricting. That in that it would be destricting means that they would be forever.
He's a con artist, correct?
Well, they, they don't have to be con artists. They have to be forced.
There's a big difference between renting and.
Well, there, there is. And that is why we know the plant is such care and attention paid to ensuring that this will be a quality project. The way to ensure quality is through standards for acceptable development. It is illegal to say that excessive complexity was for power purchase. It is illegal in the federal law to say that each unit would have to be rented or would have to be sold. That, that's something.
I don't agree on the regulations. I mean, you know, I would think at this point in this, this process, we should know that.
You, that is not a legal behavior, you know. That will by law be the decision of a redevelopment committee. The town would cannot make that this apartment would have to be forced sale or leased. To ensure that if a high quality product needs a high quality.
Quality is not quality bar. For instance, you know, compared to what, what is quality? Quality compared, you start with quality compared to, you know, I said, I said. You know what I mean? That's, that's.
There's a lot of care.
You know, and she feels it's going to fall apart. She feels it's going to look like crap in ten years, period.
Well, that's why we saw references to very.
If it's rented, you don't have a condominium association force and they get things done, painting, paving and everything like. But just again, rentals, it's a problem. It's, it's huge difference for people who own a car. You know, and I, I think what myself, at least you know what the status of those, those meetings.
Well, you, you'll know what is happening. And that's well, and it's legal for the town to require that if units be forced sale units, it would fire off. And I, you know, maybe we all, we have to enforce it.
And also, these folks have taken that into consideration regarding that this one. It's equal eye already. Cause another rental stuck in the middle. Yeah, it's going to be, it's still, who's the one? So now, who's the harm of this?
It's not that it didn't consideration. It's not a choice, a real choice that the municipality has. If you're saying they should be required for sale, that is not very well.
I would, I would like a pretty better town font for us to be something.
Well, you know, we just, we tell you that it did. There's, you know, this, this is not a situation where the town just had a horrible stretch of the world to, you know, read and use of this property.
But we lost, but we lost. Town lost, we lost. These guys.
There was a limitation that it's not back now, more than today. That is opening the set of which this talent was able to achieve. Less, the least impactful project.
But there are a lot of the least impactful things that, okay, could have gone wrong. There's many of these things, not just another street clogging, pollution causing, you know, taxes. All of our, all of the proposals have everything.
Yeah, well, the York County had residential, one, one bit late. I think it was a little suspicious of this. One of the guidelines that they had was mitigate the impacts of residential. And to do that, the most common, a common way to mitigate the impact of residential. Is to ensure that a high quality product is destricting in order to fulfill.
But there would have been six houses. That would have been less impactful. Six nice houses and people all home and took care. And didn't have, you know, hundreds of cars streaming in and out on the house. Everything, everything's on the street. You know, that is not a good street. And that is not meant, that street is not designed to have E versus E versus coming out. It's a, a one point seven five times whatever.
You're correct. It's not a. It's not a perfect world.
I'll say. Where do you live, sir? Where do you live? You live in up there?
I do not. So the only reason to do this is we have to go to school. As you already told us that for the whole community, that's why I have another.
Of course, it's not the same thing. I was mine, that's common damage.
This is, if anybody wants to comment, please welcome to my.
Hi, my name is Japhre Mollone, under fifteen ethical court. My question is, I don't understand how you can come up with this plan without doing the traffic study. So I, I don't understand. Number one, I don't have two wins. I live there, I live right there. It's not two wins wide. But you can do it. I'd like to see it done. However, why is it not a traffic study? Harrison is a busy street. We're coming in on Harrison. Why not a traffic study?
There, there will be a traffic study though that comes to the start.
I heard that, but you're, you're drawing these pictures. This is where you're coming in and later you do the traffic study.
Traffic study, everyone will determine how many.
You have to determine that according to the plan.
It's a little backwards.
It seems, it seems wrong. All right, that's, that's all I have.
Traffic study.
I don't understand it.
It's a clue.
So you're going to have an answer to that? Why, why did you do that?
I mean, once it's done, it's done anyway.
Well, you know, I've heard you said in similar situations that I've been offered. Had underwater zone and would have resulted in more intense residential building. Then there's really no issue as to whether or not the traffic will be convenient. So in the area, I understand that would be a concern in terms of the volume. Please, yeah, again, there's more part of it. The reason why the traffic report is required, playing, this is something that you should pay attention to. Because the traffic study has to demonstrate that there are safety needs of interest in the product. That's something that an applicant will have to demonstrate when they come through the plane. And so the traffic study in order to address that question, the very quick question was questioned at the time, which are. Well, if there's no anything for business, the lawyers are going to traffic. And it's really about access, safety needs of interest. That's what the law was looking for, are the demonstrate. And in order for them to demonstrate that they aren't have to address traffic laws. And they aren't have to address type of, they aren't actually special. And are not have to address whether or not individuals have safety needs. And I have a comment. Doesn't matter actually, we have preferred that plenty of two, that's what she said. Fairly for you to review and question the act of the best. Anybody else wish to be heard on the urgent number three four nine seven?
Japhre Mollone, what's the, how many proposals were presented in order this time?
We were, there were a number of different considerations of, of proposals that happened. Now just to start with, again, one of the overriding criteria was basic progress case was what was going to be impactful. Basically, why was it impactful? And I appreciate that. But given the choices that were available at the posterior location, what was the least impactful? And this is the result of exercise. They feel this is a factor that everybody understands that context. But in the context of litigation, it proved in there, this is the least.
So the town made this.
Well, look at your question. So what happens in the context, first of all, litigation was paid for by the town. You all.
I understand.
I, I understand. In the, in the redevelopment, so the work that's, or in terms of the plan, life study. Development period, et cetera. What happens to the work of the developer is this, it's to develop, reverse the town of those costs. So like, so it's private, itself, et cetera. Yes, we get paid for time from the town, but redevelopment is designated, the town is to reverse those costs.
Like for sure, people here were complaining, were agreeing that the product of this magnitude were to be presented on the actual. Check on the place referenced in here, opposition. Those were the permission. Also, I'd just like to say, who's this here? And I mentioned this before with the article here. It's almost impossible to hear what you're saying. It sounds as if you all have war on in your mouth. And I, I will tell you that if maybe you advise people, it's up, you're going into it. Start experimenting with ways to improve the system. Really, Jesus, you can't hear it all.
Commissioner, Mr. Rino. I'm thinking for that because Thursday morning, we have a couple of, all right, to evaluate this entire place. With televisions on the walls, presentation such as this, all right, it sounded definitely devices. So everyone's voice doesn't sound, they have a problem. We, we review and we'll work on it. Just one comment I want to make. Look, whether it was colonial or, or whatever, or any of them, okay, all right. Here, here would be the same amount of concern, all right, there is on, on everything. Keep in mind, we find ourselves in this spot, all right, not by choice. This is a result of lawsuits, all right? It could have rendered a hundred and thirty market rate units there, which we would have had no control over, all right? Which would have overheard the school, all right? Is will the traffic be ideal? Probably not, all right? We're going to require from the planning board side, a traffic study, all right? We're going to require stormwater study, we have shade study. Any present study you can humanly think of, we're going to require. And there are more requirements in this play, all right? And more specificity as to what we will accept and what we will not accept. Than probably in any other redevelopment committee. And don't take my word for it. Mr. Ryan, is that a correct statement?
Yes, I, I mean, in the sixty, seventy, maybe to a hundred redevelopment plans in the last ten years. This plan by far, without a doubt, has the most requirements of interior, exterior, and I've got a part of all of it. And he's not.
So this is not by choice that we find ourselves in this condition. And someone earlier said, well, all you guys worry about is going like, absolutely not. Absolutely, do we watch the dollars that we spent this time? Yes, we do, all right? But that's not the overriding concern. That's not what drives us to do what it is. Again, this is a result lawsuit. This is the settlement. This is the least of the evil, all right, that will pull for in this spot at this time.
Or I can say that I'm making sport people. So I'm tougher than I am. I think.
I'm sitting here trying to figure out how it could be litigation of this project. When speaks for itself, a fortress, my house is three by twenty two feet wide. How are we going to make a two carriage road, which is a requirement of a project? Two two town roads. Obviously, maybe one on every. You can go look at the site. It's one of the ones that was on my side. You have two houses with maybe forty foot, like death weight, which is red and white, all kind of used. That then had the, you know. And just, it didn't make much difference in front of us. All facility. How, how do you, how do you come up with any kind of litigation when it's back? This is illegal. It says that I don't provide those of state of two, two, two carriage roads to the project of this period. So we have some kind of an explanation. You know, the people that have been there for thirty years and mad that they don't want us. Period. So we get into that question about carriage roads. I mean, I know.
I need to be required of this.
I know, I know the point. This happens out in the extension, okay? The developer went around the people that they wanted as far as getting a revenue to the town to access. We told men, we went in as a, like a proposal like this. It was supposed to be a gay community, gay sex, like expenses on the weekends. And then when it went, wound up, it was developed for a scan. It wound up to be an apartment project. That happened to live there. After it, it went through a system like talking map. Wound up with a tax law wall around it. And there's homes like mine out in there that have to live with now. A wall and a street giant tree that were robbing the way. Mobile wall of the garage. I mean, like, this is not like, get back to the carriage roads. Do you want to ask a question? Like, how, how do you come up with any kind of litigation? And all the planning board actually did the same. And oh, there's not enough acres, there's not enough in and out, there's not enough facilities, there's not enough that.
So my, so litigation is based on error, let's just call it error. Litigation is based on the underlying sounding. So, so litigation is nothing to be rode with. As I've indicated, the road with requirements are based on what resulting or instances for tech. And sites might have cases that come in and have to show that they can meet those requirements.
Well, if they're. I would like, that's just, well. So I'm like, if the developer had involved, I'm ever going to say, sir, would like to buy a property to the left or to the right? Cause we need a legal amount of entry to this project. Or is he going to just like dilly-dally and go around and then the planning board just like shuns and looks the other way? And the commissioners who have the last final say on what, if this is to go through or not? What, what's their, I mean, they make the final say if the project's legit or if it's not.
The planning board is the, is the entity that will, will supply that application. Professionals.
We know that, we have to look at the other way. I mean, they're.
I don't agree with this.
They should be, they should have been here listening to what people are.
This, this, yeah, this, this is not a set of plans.
I know, I know that. I mean, this, there are other sides, it's, it's not a model. We know it's not a settlement. It's a proposal of what you may want to do when you get a developer. These people are stupid, but it's just, it's just not good. And because it's not legal. The carriage roads aren't legit. I don't know how you can get one drunk way out on my house street. Like how, how can you maneuver twenty two foot road with, with a traffic home and use the backferr. And then if you wind up like maybe, somebody's going to be in your driveway on every. And, and somebody's going to just drive right to a left drive instead of going up to the two carriage road. This is a two carriage road. And they're going to get hit by a car. Is that all the sack on there? Won't get done with driving. And, and there's, that, that's the only way in. And the person went up their own driveway. That's illegal. Another thing, we're going to have two forty years here before the developer gets his hands on this plan. What are these people going to actually do with the rodents and the infestation? on this plan, what are these people gonna actually do with the rodents and the infestation? The developer and the town are supposed to work together and make sure these rodents and, and them are, are not around. Their lives are miserable, it's obvious, it's obvious, and this has happened to me years ago, when it just started, like, coming into flight, with all these partners that nobody wants, and a complete builder, and go around this way, that way, to do the project. You can say what you want, the stemmer can say what he wants, but, it's, 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 it's all, like, it's all, again, they have experts, I'm their own expert, I'm certainly the audience, like, trying to put things together, and listening to experts, these people aren't experts, they're just trying to push a plan through, and we don't like, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alessio. Anybody else want to be heard on this stuff in 3497? Speaking of having emotional pause in public hearing, one more. Thank you.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Spurkell.
Hi. Do you need your minutes?
Second. Commissioner Kelly. Before I run, I think it's important for me to say, for your orders, uh, this, this is something that's been brewing by, brewing on the promotional boards, but, felt in this board to, to resolve this issue, uh, I labored it many nights to catch up with our documents, signed up on litigation, as somebody I've known, I'm an attorney myself, I spoke to, uh, John, I spoke to Fran, uh, to, to catch up, I, I worked with the other commissioners, and, this was not an easy decision, but we felt it was the best decision, not only for the, the town, but for the community as well, uh, when we, when we realized that we needed to come up with a compromise, we, we negotiated, uh, we got the best deal that we had for the town, and then when it came to going, what's gonna be put there, we spent many late nights, we were here until some, some, till early hours, and playing some nights, with Fran, with John, trying to come up with what this would look like, and how it can be the least impactful for the neighborhood, uh, we fought hard for this, uh, we not abandoned, we, this is not a shortage of where we're all at our part, uh, this was, this was a hard part, a battle, legally, and, uh, in the late nights, trying to figure out a negotiation, what this is gonna look like, uh, we all love this town, I love this town, this is, this is why I'm doing this, uh, I, I grew up going to Pueblo, my aunt and I were going to Pueblo, familiar with the neighborhood, I live in the area now, I, I don't live with my parents, I'm right across the side, I bought a townhouse in St. Pierre, by Montsenor, Lake Place, so, it's not going up in my, my backyard, so, this is going up in my neighborhood, and I feel confident that this is, this is, is not gonna be, uh, something that's gonna detract on the neighborhood, I feel like it's gonna improve the neighborhood, and I'm cognizant of everyone's concerns, and, and that was definitely why I made you about this process, also, I wanted to make sure that we're protecting the schools, I feel like this, this plan is, is the best plan that we can come up with, given the litigation, given the zoning issues, I think that, that it's gonna improve the neighborhood, uh, I know, I know this is a very industry allocation, uh, but it, it's something that we worked with, we spoke to a lot of experts on it, and it's just not something that we just developed, well, you know, this is something that we all put a lot of thought into, so I'm voting aye.
In going to this, uh, it's not easy to say, I have a lot of experience, uh, the history of this property, and, and underlying zoning issues, that it's, it's, did not play well in the Bay Harbor town, uh, strip away, or, we'll, we'll, we'll talk to tonight several times, underlying zoning would allow for at least 130 positive outbreak fire jackets and, and also allow for commercial buses to be, none of which fit, none of that, it's the traffic flows, and, and there is a lot of debate over whether or not apartments add children to schools, uh, that's actually, uh, very misleading, because they don't. And if people would actually ask the question, you would look at, and involve the school system, probably now, since 2018, the nature of this developer allows for residents of the town to move into something that is the use of the town, and we don't have, we don't have anything, or, residents have option. Uh, I think my preference is, uh, if, 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 to say, hey, if we were to have our problems, would we put this there? But basically, litigation, based with advice of council, being very clear, that we go forward on these people, and the nature of the outcome of that would have been something far larger, far more problematic than, so, it's, it's not, it's not something that I think, and I do believe, uh, and we did not go through all the details, I encourage you, to, you know, to get a copy of the plan itself, and all the details of the plan that I had to do this, to make sure that this is a solidable, well-constructed, that is actually providing as much, kind of, as, as, as possible. And I appreciate your reaction, and we may not agree, maybe that's okay, but my decision is I have to vote on this, and share, this is not an easy decision, one that we debated for a long time, so, I've said that.
I, I pretty much said my piece, uh, again, just to be, to find ourselves in this spot, as a result of the issue, this is the lesson of the people, alright, and, this will track stress operation at the current, five, a thousand, the township, that lot, I've asked you, alright, whether, yeah, yeah, sure, very proud, um, and again, we've collaborated on this many nights, many hours, over our own research, it's not a decision that we planned, it's a decision that.
Yeah, I think, uh, what you say, the points, uh, this is, it's not something that we, uh, we didn't enjoy though, uh, we're, we're very cognizant of the neighbors, the neighborhood, and that, and, we're gonna be sure of the, the level, we address some of those issues, uh, with traffic, and offering, uh, but it's, it's unfortunate to find ourselves in this situation, uh, but, based on what could be, and what could have been, I, I believe this is the best solution, I believe.
If you want to, you want to, we have to go to school. That's exactly.
Of course, there's nothing new in schools, it has to be, we lost the lawsuit, we made like 130 units.
I have a school, I, I would, I would, that, that, who cares, 82, 130, who cares? So, we, it's, it's, it's.
We're looking at 42 store cycles.
It's 42, and then it's 30 out of there, you know that.
Again, I really must address, microphones there, please.
Let's move on with the agenda. We have a phone carrier, I have a number, number 3498, it's a mission of transport and support, it's a link, it's, I have a, I have a attachment, check it, 23, so, it's a traffic to 47, just as long as the air is there, we go ahead. Anybody wish to address the, word of commissioners, I saw this number 3498. It's not open, close, public area, second.
Mayor Spurkell.
Uh, who we heard in this, second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Evans.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Spurkell.
Hi. One resolution, Commissioner Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor, I'm not ready to listen, not in the C Ds, to commemorate the adversity of these great forces, uh, whereas, dress is on, and local one, very likely to increase the national war fight for the corporation of operational reserves, in August 29th, 1916, President Woodrow Roosevelt, signed enable for creation back in 1916, that was the Marine Corps Reserve, Marine Corps, rather than the mobile, I saw on the local one, by 1923, primary reserve that, the mobile license, that is, 9% of the reserve ranks discharged, and that's 600 marines and their force, maintained readiness for 20 years, then found, uh, Marine Corps, Major General Chauvin, with your, turned the health reserve component, says, compensators, diminished after force, we're going to return 20 merchant forces, hot, for, in the jury's opinion, in the event of war, it is absolutely necessary that there be at the Marine Corps, priority currency, that way, well, train reserve. Rest, I disagree with travel agreement on February 28th, 1925, as an act, suspended the Act of 1916, superseded the Act of 1916, so, creation oriented national administration of Navy, when the Marine Corps Reserve was organized into 18, it's 10, and established, A V A's projects, conducted drills, in weekly two-hour drill sessions, reserve administrators concentrated in single-station agency, discharged veterans of World War I, or, or, returned to the ranks, whereas the reserve grew throughout the 1920s until it exceeded 10,000 marines by 1930, the growth was no greater than the back to the, it's the no-jo stay outside of the, two weeks summer camp training, and no purchase, and, and had purchased, made a uniform, lines, thus, with a fierce loyalty on the part of Marines in the SAK, and reserves alive over years, great pressure. Whereas today in the United States, Marine Corps Reserve stands ready to continue the competition for the, for, for, by, by, combining the law and top areas of basic service to name, to resolve base models challenges, and according to the resolve of four missions, it's from the, now, the, safety, for, for, August 29th, 22nd, at the 106th record of United States Marine Corps Reserve, 7th, 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 so, it's a.
I assume, second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Second.
Commissioner Spurkell.
Hi. Sorry. You just a little bit, okay?
My, she was a little wrong, but, so, uh, sorry, Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Spurkell.
Hi. Thank you.
We resolve a rule of justice, and challenge some of the categories of state of New Jersey, and the territory of purpose here by well-qualified capital class, sealed with its H E C monitoring and influence, of, of, five hundred, nine, nine, drive on Jersey, see, on big capital one, mission changes, challenge goal, and, and, on Wednesday, September 7th, and Monday, and, each time, people will be.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Spurkell.
Hi. Commissioner?
That's all I have, thank you.
Whereas, yeah, whereas in record application, Stephen Apollo, or, the, or, the, Center Foundation, less than 862, on premise, intended to be, be, what, be, otherwise, in 2022, whereas they have a big step, and, and, by this, for, this, following, now, the work of, 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 which, that's, the, the, in New Jersey, and the former, so, I said, group of, of, for, 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 so, I think.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Spurkell.
Hi, whereas this for the 2022 Chisholm Street Road Project, right on the avenue of Whitburn, where Steve wrote on Wednesday, June 29th, 22, whereas the OS project, the six-month, seven-month, true, is the most responsible, a little bitter, whereas the bid, bid, 2022 Chisholm Road, project, is in the balance, so, 100, 100, 600, in all sense, and it's all good price, so, so, 100, 600, sense, whereas was revealed from Captain G O four, what's a four, four, one, one, seven, three, four, eight, four, and, of the, so, that's, that's, dollars, money received by, for transportation, local avenues, the grand captain, chief, four, four, what's, seven, four, one, 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 six, you got, one, 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 sense, and, and, so, right, chief, my, it's a, so, certification, et cetera, this was a motion, I heard, of, 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 signature, then the contract, we work for the D L S contract, I think, 614,000, 600, 2,000, so, in the, sense, and then the mayor attached to her, here by all this, to the sausage, to the president.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Spurkell.
Hi.
Whereas this for the 2022 King Street Road Project, on quarter, we have, we see, open the, Wednesday, right, I think, 22, whereas the L L, D N L, project, 75, frankly, I have, the most responsible, whereas the base bid for the 2022 King Street Road, project, is the amount of 1,000, 600, 22, dollars, in all sense, but it's all good price, 11, 640, 301, whereas, 1,000, 1,919, 1,914, 3,000, dollars, money received by, from, from, Captain G O four, so, so, 1,002, something, dollars, in all sense, Captain G O four, what's seven, dollars, four, one, 5,000, dollars, and then certified by, by, chief, my, it's a certification, et cetera, in this resolution, therefore, it's all, of, 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 the, the, in the, in the, D N L, project, system, whatever, I think, usually, I think, 300, 1,000, 600, 3,000, dollars, in all sense, and then the mayor attached to, 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 to the, 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 to[1768.48]